Good evening. This is Mayor Dana Ralph, and I'd like to welcome you to the Kent City Council Meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 emergency. Live broadcasts are available on Kent TV 21, Facebook, and YouTube. We also have a call-in option for this meeting. Kim, are all the council members present this evening?
All council members are present and accounted for.
All right. Thank you very much. We will move on in our agenda to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from council administration or staff?
No changes from administration or staff.
All right. Thank you. If no changes to the agenda, a motion would be in order to approve?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the agenda.
They're good.
A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you very much. We will move on to public communications. We have a couple of things under public recognition this evening. The first one is an appointment to our Public Facilities District Board. That is Shower Center. That board is made up of community members from a variety of different sectors across community and industry. And tonight, council is before you is an appointment for Zenovia Harris, the CEO of the Kent Chamber, to the Public Facilities Board. The task in front of that board is really to ensure that the portions of that sales tax that's generated by Shower Center are used appropriately and to pay debt service on Shower. So with that, would like to remind council that that appointment is on the consent calendar for this evening and will presumptively welcome Zenovia Harris to the PFD Board. I also, this evening, have a proclamation. Councilmember Core requested that this proclamation be issued. Many of our surrounding cities, as well as the Sound Cities Association through action that will be taken tomorrow at the board meeting, are issuing a proclamation just really reminding our communities that discrimination is not something that is tolerated here in the city of Kent or in our region, given everything that is going on with the COVID crisis. Reminding people, like I said, that discrimination on the basis of race, nationality, or ethnicity is not, it's just not acceptable and something that's not welcome in our community. So I would like to say, on behalf of the city council, I do hereby proclaim our renewed and ongoing support of embracing diversity and ensuring a welcoming environment for everyone in our community. Kent strongly stands against hate, bias, and violence based on race, nationality, gender, disability, or religion, and I urge all residents to come together and support their neighbors during this unprecedented time. As a community responding to the challenges brought by COVID, we stand stronger together. Thank you, councilmember Core, for bringing this before the council. And I do believe it's a strong reminder of the values that we hold here in the Kent community for each individual. So, thank you. All right. We are going to move on to community events. Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no community events to report at this time.
All right. That moves us on in our agenda to the Public Safety Report. Chief Padilla.
Good morning, Madam Mayor. Members of the City Council, it's my pleasure to bring you this month's Public Safety Report. I'm going to start with the presentation of three lifesaving medals. First up, you're good there, Kim, for the first slide. Thank you. First up, the first award goes to Officer Jason Nixon. Officer Nixon is a veteran with the police department and served in several capacities, including our Neighborhood Response Team, Bike Unit, Field Training Officer, and Patrol. It also should be noted that this is not his first lifesaving award. This will be a second. He's already won one from a prior incident. So, the incident, on November 5th, 2019, Officer Jason Nixon was driving home in his assigned patrol vehicle after a shift. He observed an accident in which a semi truck left the road and crashed on Southbound State Route 167. He grabbed his automatic electronic defibrillator and joined the Washington State Patrol troopers who were also on scene. And that's notable in that because they were on scene and already handling it, he was off-duty. He could have simply driven by, and, you know, but that's not the type of officer that he is. So he stopped anyway. It was a good thing. He was able to use his automatic electronic defibrillators, AED, to administer shocks to the unconscious truck driver and was able to revive him. So, he gave him two shocks, they continued CPR, and the driver later recovered at the hospital. Officer Nixon is being commended for his compassion and taking the time to stop, even while off-duty, and helped with the serious situation that resulted in saving a life. We have several incidents now where officers have stopped on their way home or even on their way into work, and because they have their cars and their necessary emergency equipment with them, they're able to take action. So that's paying off big time. Next up, I want to present lifesaving awards to Officer Garth Corner and Officer Corey Eaton. It's notable these gentlemen are also veteran officers with the department, and both currently serve, notably, on the Valley SWAT team in addition to their patrol assignments. So what happened? On February 17, 2020, Officer Garth Corner and Corey Eaton were dispatched to a CPR call of an adult female at a care home in Kent. Upon arriving, they found the 50-year-old female unconscious and unresponsive. They performed CPR together. They had readied the AED, but it advised that it was not necessary, so they continued with normal CPR, chest compressions and breath, and they kept the female alive until Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority could show up with their more enhanced lifesaving efforts and took over the effort. The good news is, the female was eventually transported to Valley Medical, and she did survive due to their efforts. We received notification from the King County Public Health Emergency Management Services Division that, in their words, that this victim would not have survived if it had not been for the efforts of both the officers. We are commending Officer Corner and Officer Eaton for their extraordinary actions which were instrumental in saving these victims' lives. Congratulations to both of those officers. And then next up there, Kim? And following up with some of the information I provided last month regarding our crime stats, I wanted to talk about some major crime incidents and updates on where those cases are. This has been, this will really be a showcase of some great police work, both by our patrol officers and our detectives. As I noted last month, our violent crimes, armed robberies, aggravated assaults, and shootings are up. Unfortunately, in the particular category of shootings, they're up 70% from this time last year. And while that information is alarming, I do truly believe that most of it, if not all of it, is a direct result of the situation we all find ourselves in due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And that includes the more desperate situations that our violent criminals are finding themselves in right now. So I also want to assure the community that while these numbers are bad, our officers and detectives are doing a great job in identifying and arresting the suspects in most of these cases. The arrest rate has been very high, and so we're very proud of that. So let me give you some examples of what we're talking about. And before that, I think our city attorney would very much appreciate me providing this disclaimer, in that these cases have not been adjudicated, and in the eyes of the judicial systems, all the suspects are considered innocent until proven guilty. So there you go. There's the legal disclaimer. So, first incident I will talk about is back on March 18th. It happened at one of our parks here, then on the south end at 200 West Cloudy. It was basically a drive-by shooting involving gang members. Two subjects in a car drove by, shot at a suspect that was in the park or near the park, I should say. And unfortunately, despite lifesaving efforts by our officers, the victim did die. Our major crimes detectives responded to investigate, and through some very involved work, they identified and subsequently arrested two suspects in the shooting. Both the subjects are currently being held on gun charges from an unrelated Auburn case, and formal charges for murder are pending. So that case is solved. On April 6, 2020, in the area of 204th and 240th, up on our east hill, a 39-year-old suspect was stabbed by another male during a conflict that involved an argument regarding an ex-girlfriend. The suspect fled on scene and was gone prior to the officers arriving. They did try lifesaving measures as well. Those were not successful, unfortunately. Again, our major crime detectives were called out, and I want to point out that what that means is when they get called out, they're normally off-duty, at home, sometimes on their weekend, and whatever it is they've got going on, they stop and they respond. And sometimes, it could be, you know, early morning hours, like 3:00 in the morning. It's not uncommon. So, this is the life of our detectives. So, after spending several hours investigating the case, one of our detectives was heading home in his car, and he noticed a male that looked like the suspect. He stopped, did some investigation, and through a lot of additional work, we're able to get, arrest the male and identify him as the murder suspect. Detective, let's see here, so that case is also solved. The subject is in custody, awaiting trial. Another incident we had recently, April 17th, we had a shooting that resulted in the male victim being hit at the city's end apartments on our east hill. The victim was in the parking lot, was confronted by several subjects in that parking lot, and was, one of the subjects opened fire, hitting the male in his hand. He did live, and we did provide additional medical attention to him. It was done by the responding officers. Our major crime detectives responded again. They did investigations, and what they found out was that the male was there for not the greatest of reasons. He was there to purchase marijuana, or so he thought, when the incident went down. Unfortunately, in this case, the two suspect juveniles are very young, and so they were looking for them. We have identified them, and we hope to have them in custody soon. Another incident, on April 22nd, our officers were dispatched to railroad, to the railroad tracks at 212th and 77th. The initial call was for a car versus train collision. Turn, as the officers were responding, the vehicle that hit the train was leaving. One of our officers, an alert officer, Officer Fisher, spotted the vehicle, tried to stop it. It ended up beginning into a pursuit. He did a pursuit intervention technique or a pit, spun the suspect car around, got it stopped, eventually got it under control. The male driver was, appeared to be intoxicated and did fight with Officer Fisher. So, he did end up tasing him in that event. And eventually, they got him under control. They started investigating. They noticed there was an unconscious female in the back. Under further examination of her, it appeared she wasn't breathing. They did lifesaving measures that were unsuccessful, and she was deceased. In looking at her injuries, it became apparent that the collision was probably not the cause of her death. Our major crime detectives were called out for that. They did some tremendous work involving retracing the steps of the murder suspect and the victim, and eventually were able to establish probable cause. And that suspect is in custody for multiple charges, and most recently for the charge of murder. So that case is solved. And then most recently, on May 12th, just last week, we had a home invasion robbery on our west hill, where one man was shot and killed, and two others were severely assaulted. Major crime detectives took over the case that involved three male suspects who entered the home, one of which opened fire, and then they fled prior to the officers arriving. Thorough job was done, and although the case is not complete, we have identified the main person in this. We have probable cause for his arrest, so that, we are hoping, will be accomplished very soon, in addition to identifying the two other males who were involved in the shooting. So, not completely solved, but we have solid leads, and we're pretty hopeful we will get that case wrapped up as well. So, as you can see, lots going on, but at the same time, between the combination of great teamwork with the initial response of patrol officers, and then the follow-up for our major crime detectives, a lot of bad guys are getting caught and are being put in jail. So, just wanted to report some great work there. And lastly, Mayor, I just want to take a moment to recognize that today was a very difficult day for all of us, and that we had to release some really good people today. These are people that, for years, have served the Kent community well, and so they are deserving of our appreciation. And I want to heartfelt, express a heartfelt thanks to their families, and we're doing what we can to support them. So, I also think it's important to acknowledge the work that you've done, CEO Matheson and my peers, and the directors, you know, and big kudos to Paula Painter. She pulled the lion chair of the work in this. And so, difficult work, nothing anybody here wanted to do, but I think the plan that's come out really does maximize the limited resources we have, so we can continue to provide the needed services to the community. Very, very, and then, lastly, I just want to reassure the Kent residents that although we were already lean as a police department in terms of our staffing, and while we will see some modifications to nonessential programs, ultimately, we stand very capable and ready to completely respond with any emergency services. That has not changed, and we're going to be able to deliver public safety the way that our city needs it. So, that, I just want to say thank you, and if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief. I, yeah, thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Okay, I am not seeing any. I do want to offer congratulations to the officers that received the lifesaving awards tonight. If this were an in-person council meeting, I know that each council member would want to say the same and shake their hand. So, hoping we get back to that at some point, and we can properly celebrate the great work that's being done. Okay, we are going to move on in the agenda to reports from council and staff. I will start out with my report. Want to echo a lot of what the chief just said. Very hard day here at the city of Kent. We are having to say goodbye to some very important members of our city family. And we'll tell you, it's one of the toughest days, I know, that I have had here, and want to say thank you to everyone. Say, I am sorry to the impacted employees. This is absolutely not a decision that any of us would have hoped to make as a result of the impacts of COVID-19 and the budget situations. It's been extremely difficult, and just want to just say that, I know Council President Troutner will talk a little bit more about some of those budget details, but I want to start by just saying thank you to everyone for the work that's been done over the last couple of weeks, and the fact that these hard decisions are going to make us sustainable going into the future. So, for that, I am grateful. Keeping with the theme of hard news, difficult things, want to talk a little bit about some of the programs and things that are not going to be happening here in the city of Kent this summer. So, I am very, very proud to say that for a lot of us, when we think about the city of Kent, we think about our award-winning parks programs and all the things that are done by our rec staff and our Parks Department to provide the community with fun activities, ways to get out and experience our city and things, programs and events. And as a result of the stay-home, stay-healthy order issued by the governor, and the phased approach to returning back to gathering, we collectively have had to make some really hard decisions about summer programming. At this point, we have canceled our summer parks programming. We talked a little bit about the 4th of July splash last week, but I kind of want to just run through, so people have an understanding of all of the things that our rec department does in providing, in providing events and activities for our residents. And some of the things that we have had to cancel, not a comprehensive list, but day camps, Camp Waskewitz, our Hero Mobile Recreation Program, our teen center at the Phoenix Academy, Lake Meridian. We are not going to be staffing lifeguards at Lake Meridian this summer. All of our sports leagues for the summer, youth activities, and adults, our adaptive rec program. It's a one-of-a-kind program that I don't know that is anywhere to be found, and we are having to make the hard decision to cancel that programming over the summer. Our senior center will remain closed, as will Kent Commons, our summer concert series at Lake Meridian, and our youth, our children's summer concerts during the week, as well as Cornucopia Days 5K, our summer art exhibit. The list is long, extremely difficult decision to cancel these activities, but there is not any way for us to be able to do them and abide by the governor's phased-in approach to returning, returning our state to being more active. So, I want to make sure to say thank you so much to our rec staff for all of the work that you do, and let our community know that we will be back and running next year. And just want to say I'm sorry that we're not able to offer these programs, because I know how important they are to our community. With that, before I pass it on to our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson, I want to make sure that we recognize him this evening. So, Derek is the person that is behind, behind the scenes on everything that we do, the decisions that are made. He provides tremendous guidance to, to me, to our council, to all of our departments, and I don't think we say thank you enough. So, before I turn it over, Derek, I want to say thank you for everything you do for all of us every single day. And with that, I'm going to let you do your report.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Ralph. You certainly didn't need to say that, but I appreciate it nonetheless. For my report, I'll defer to Council President Troutner on the operating budget, but I did want to share that as we've worked on the operating budget, we've also looked at our capital projects for cost savings opportunities. And to the extent we can, our goal is to keep as much construction moving forward as possible. And that's because our capital dollars leverage a lot of outside grant money that we don't want to lose. And we've found from a couple of projects that we've bid since the start of COVID-19, that it's a great bid climate and great pricing. And so, we're going to try to keep that capital moving forward as much as we can. Also, our economic development team is continuing to look for new ways to support our struggling business community, especially small businesses. During your workshop, we talked briefly about the Federal Cares Grant that the state plans to share with cities under 500,000 population. And so, we're beginning to look at that for opportunities to support programs for our small business community, as well as job training programs. And then, I've mentioned before, we have an interdepartmental recovery team, and the group continues to prepare for an eventual return to work for our office-based employees. We're still a ways away from reopening our public counters, which the governor's plan puts in Phase 3, and I think we're even a longer ways away from shifting most of our telecommuting employees back to the office. But we're doing our best to be prepared for that eventual transition back to normalcy. And in the field, of course, our police officers have continued to do what they always do in the midst of COVID-19. Our Teamsters employees were on alternate schedules for almost two months, and they returned to normal schedules, or the last of them did, the week of May 11th. So, the rest of my report is in your packet, and we have no executive session this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Derek. Council President Troutner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As mentioned, we did have a presentation on the budget during our workshop today, and the city has come up with budget reductions. It has been a team effort and a collaboration amongst all the departments, the mayor, the CAO. It is a $15.7 million revenue shortfall, and to make up for that, money will be coming from the general fund fund balance, non-departmental capital transfer reductions, Health and Wellness Fund fund balance, department reductions that will be ongoing, and then department reductions that will be one-time reductions. We had a really great presentation from our finance director, Paula Painter, and that was shown on Facebook Live, also on the city's YouTube channel. So, if you did not have a chance to get to watch that, and you are interested, you can go out there and take a look. It gives a little bit more detail on reductions through the different departments. And again, I know it's been mentioned multiple times, but I really want to thank the mayor, CAO Matheson, all of the department directors for coming together, making these difficult decisions in a very short amount of time, so that we can hopefully get back to some bit of normal and be able to provide all of those services again to our community. So, thank you so much to everyone that helped put this together. So thank you so much to everyone that helped um put this together. I also sit on a couple of regional committees. Regional Law, Safety and Justice will meet at the end of this month through a Zoom meeting, and then Regional Transit Committee just continues to pass on updates. So I will look to my colleagues now, so you can hear if they have been up to anything um on their committees that they participate on. And I will start first with council member Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have anything to report.
All right, moving on to council member Core.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have um quite a bit to report this evening. Uh, so first, uh, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Ralph for the proclamation um uh for anti-hate. Uh, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And I know we all um are in we're all on the same page on this. But first, um, regional meetings, I serve on Domestic Violence Regional Task Force. And we had our meeting last week. And in that meeting, we had a presentation and we learned there has been an increase in D V calls, but not in arrests because victims are in usually in the same house um as the the person who is um causing them harm. So there's been a rise uh nationally and internationally uh in D V calls and victim more isolated, stressed and in need of critical services than ever. And also resources are scarce. So uh, but I would encourage victims to still reach out and ask for help. And courts have been remote um filing remote protection orders, and they have been working um online. Resources are available on King County website or contact protection order advocacy program at two zero six four seven seven three seven five eight. And the second committee, I serve as the chair for P G S on Clean Air Agency Advisory Council. We also had our meeting last week. Uh, we had presentation on air pollution and transportation climate planning, planning update. So during the presentation, we learned in our region that traffic pollutants are down twenty to thirty percent. However, fine particle pollution has been higher than expected, and that's because a lot of people are at home and they're burning house fires um in their backyards or wherever. So uh, there's been a increase, and I don't have a number for how much an increase that is. On transportation climate planning, we talked about post-COVID nineteen realities, including vehicle usage, vehicle technology and fuel price collapse. We also had a brief update on decreased gas revenue and I nine seventy-six and impacts on transportation budget shortfall. The third one, I also serve on state and federal policy committee with Association of Washington Cities, known as A W C. And A W C is comprised of two hundred eighty-one cities in Washington State. We had a meeting to work on draft of um statement of policy document. And it serves as a framework that will help us set our annual policy agenda for the next six years. Uh, we are still working on that document and will be meeting on that again shortly after um the cities provide their feedback. They made some updates, so we'll be finalizing that shortly. Uh, that is my update on the committees. I would like to have a moment of privilege, Madam Mayor, council president. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all individuals out there serving our communities, uh, all the nonprofits that are doing the work. And I just wanted to give a shout out to uh residents that I came across, Lily Smith. Uh, she's been serving our community, uh, you know, picking up, set up a food pantry, serving ten to eighteen families a week. She's picking up uh donated items and delivering to the individuals' doors. She's even got a group of other individuals helping her drive and serving our communities on East Hill, mostly um apartment complexes. And if anybody wants to get in touch with her, you can reach uh on her Facebook page. I believe it's like a Kent pantry, oh, the sharing pantry on Kent East Hill. So uh, thank you very much for that. And uh, that is all my report. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Moving on to council member Larmour.
Thank you, council president. Um, so I serve on the Aging and Disability Advisory Council for King County. And we met last week. Um, we had uh sort of our running theme lately has uh been uh updates from the Public Health Department on um COVID. Uh, but but uh a little bit of difference this month was that we did take some time at the beginning of the meeting to acknowledge that May is Older Americans Month and that the theme this year is Make Your Mark. And so just want to encourage people to share their um experience being an active, vital part of our communities. There is a hashtag setup, which is hashtag O A M twenty twenty, and it's kind of fun. You can go out and look and just learn a lot about um older Americans and all the wonderful things that they're still actively doing and contributing to our communities during this time. Um, and then, like I I said, you know, most of our meeting was dedicated to uh discussions of uh getting an update on the public from Ann Shields of Public Health. Um, again, this is this is prior to the governor's announcement of the masks, so that's not really new news. Um, however, I do want to point out that the Kaiser Permanente website uh was listed as a resource for an easy D I Y mask pattern that you can make with materials from from home. Um, so if you're looking for um a way to make your own masks, there is something available on Kaiser Permanente. Um, the one thing she did emphasize is that the rate of reinfection is really not understood at this point from a public health perspective. Um, there is some early evidence that you might be able to reinfect or be reinfected soon after recovery. Um, so that just, you know, maintain vigilance about social distancing and wearing masks in public to protect yourselves and protect others. Um, the the one thing that did come up in the advisory council portion of our meeting was that uh, there's several COVID nineteen advisory groups at the um uh, reporting directly into the governor at the governor's level. Uh, and they do not seem to have senior representative, senior representatives on those on those advisory groups. So um, the advisory council is is attempting to um make sure that there are senior voices represented in those groups as we um have these discussions and look to opening um the state backup, make sure that the senior voices are there as well at the table. Um, I also sit on the Affordable Housing um committee for King County, and we met on Friday. We had a very, actually a very long meeting because we uh skipped our first, or we'd missed our previous month. So we had a long three-hour presentation. Um, getting caught up and taking a look at what is happening now to housing in our region because of COVID and what could be occurring in the coming, um, you know, even in the coming year, post uh post the actual initial response. And if we end up going into a recession situation, what that might look like and the effects of that. And so it was, like I said, it was a lengthy presentation. I did send out the deck to my fellow council members for their review. Um, but just a few surprising things that I learned, um, you know, is that even in the recession, actually, housing prices historically do not lower. Historically, housing prices actually increased during a recession. Um, and this is due to people becoming less mobile uh due to their economic conditions. So you don't see a turnover in inventory. And um there's also less corporate incentives. There's less need for tax credits and less um incentives for building during these times. So it becomes a supply and demand. So going into a recession, you know, we actually are looking at the potential of housing prices potentially rising because um there's just not the supply won't be there. Uh, so just talking about uh what, how to, you know, address these situations as they're coming in the next year and what the uh committees, how we're going to sort of reorient our work plan and priorities to address um sort of the the new world we're looking at now. Uh, so like I said, there there's a lot of good information in that presentation. If you guys want to take a closer look at that and have any questions for me um that I can pass on or or facilitate with King County staff. And I will leave it at that.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, before I do my report, I just want to let you jump on the mayor bandwagon here for a minute and and her comment regarding uh our CEO, Eric Madison. And I just think um, working with him for four years, you know, as a council president, I mean, he is top-notch. And I would just so even kill. I never seen him get frustrated. I mean, I always stay focused and though I have the opportunity to work with leaders at my organization at the highest level, and uh they're definitely will fit in without any issue at all. And I'm just so blessed and thankful that we have him as our CEO. I mean, such a great leader. So very thankful to have him there. Uh, with that said, uh, S C A, uh, we have a virtual meeting on uh five thirteen, May thirteen, and uh we had an opportunity to have our S C A uh board president, Madam Mayor, uh, she uh addressed the committee and uh had some great words of wisdom. Uh, really letting know we all going through this here. And we are all going through this together, and we must kind of stay together and get through this. So I really appreciate uh the mayor coming in uh as the S C A president, addressing the committee, and the committee really appreciate her coming in in um and uh listen to her uh as our leader on Sound City Association. Also want to say, uh, we had a couple items that we looked at. One, we already talked about, that's the proclamation of a commitment to an inclusive committee that rejects stigma and bias related to COVID nineteen. So the pit committee, uh, they uh addressed it and and adopt that. And um I think it's going to go in front of the S C A board, I think, tomorrow, and they probably would adopt it as well as the uh S C A. The other item we looked at uh was around the King County uh rate and fee increase. Um, we as pit, uh, we adopt the that, you know, that go on to the board that the urge King County and and other entities to avoid any any increase in rate and fee in light of COVID nineteen, right? So we just didn't think it makes sense to be increasing any rate uh during this year, tough time. So uh, we as pick, we adopted that. And uh, I think that's all I'd have. Um, Madam President, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Thomas.
Thank you, council president Troutner. Uh, I serve on the P G S L Regional Fire Authority, and we have no report to to give you this evening.
Thank you. And council member Fincher.
Council president, King Conservation District has not had a meeting, and next Thursday, the twenty eighth, will be the next meeting for mid mental illness and drug dependency advisory committee. Uh, even though I gave my report last time for the meeting last month, I would like to remind people that being locked away or being kept apart from other people, even though some of us may be quite happy to do that, there's some people who are having a very difficult time. With this, it can lead to anxiety and depression for some people. So just a reminder to please give your friends and neighbors a call just to check on them. You live in an apartment complex. You know, knock on the knock on the door and for your uh neighbors, see how they're doing. Talk to them through the door, keep the distancing going. But just check on them and see, you know, make sure that they're okay. If you have concerns about someone or if you yourself may be uh in crisis or just want to have somebody to talk to, you can always call the twenty-four hour crisis line in King County. That number's two zero six four six one three two two two, or the toll-free number comes out to eight six six for crisis. Anyway, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Madam Mayor, that ends our reports. Okay, thank you, um, council president Troutner and council members. Um, even though we are, things are not normal, um, sounds like everyone is starting to ramp up and get back to doing business. So good to hear that, and thank you for taking the time. All right, um, item number seven on our agenda is public comment. During the coronavirus emergency, we are asking that if you have public comment to submit to the council that you do that via email at citycouncil@kentwood.gov, or you can call um two five three eight five six five seven zero zero. The next item on the agenda is our consent calendar, which is a compilation of items that the council has addressed during the committee of the whole in the previous weeks. There are items A through E tonight, all things, um, like I said, addressed at committee of the whole. Council president, do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Oh, let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll go back to public, to to the public hearing.
Yes, I'll be happy to do that after we come back to it.
Okay.
Item number six, sorry.
I apologize for that. We got out of order here a little bit. Um, item number six on our agenda is the public hearing. We have a public hearing tonight on uh the ordinance to adopt targeted residential area investment program or TRIP. And um we, the staff will give a presentation, and then I'll invite the public to provide testimony, written statements, or other evidence. Public input must relate to the subject of the public hearing. Council members, um, just a reminder that you can ask questions during the hearing. Uh, if you're on the virtual meeting or on the phone line, you will be provided with an opportunity to speak shortly. With that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask Haley Bond Steel to make a presentation um regarding this ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to council. Um, I believe you're all familiar with this program, but just to remind you, the targeted residential investment program uh is a sort of reinvigoration of a program that Kent previously had on the books for many years. And we discussed it at a council workshop earlier this year, and then again at a committee of the whole meeting uh a few weeks ago. And the council has taken one step in this process, which is to um do a resolution of intent regarding the geographic areas where we intend to uh adopt this program. But the motion before the council tonight is to actually adopt the program. So um, that is the the last big step in this process. So um, I believe you're all familiar, but what it is, is uh the multifamily tax exemption program as laid out in state law. What we've done is to take that program and add a lot of specific or um specific requirements that are related to Kent's housing supply needs and specifically um follows our adopted policy for our downtown and midway areas. So Kim, you could flip to the next slide. Um, the details here are, and this is important, it's not a tax exemption on the land. So the tax that we collect today on land would continue to be collected. It's only an exemption on those improvements that are built under the program, and it's for a period of time, either eight or twelve years, depending on the details. And after that eight or twelve-year period, we would then begin additionally collecting those um that those taxes on the improvement. So the land we're collecting taxes on full-time. So an eight-year exemption is available in both both midway and downtown. Um, but if a project would like to get twelve, uh, sorry, four additional years or twelve years total of the exemption, in midway, they would need to make twenty percent of the units affordable to those making thirty percent of area median income or below. And I do have uh the numbers with me for uh what different levels of A M I are. If anybody would like to discuss that, as we've mentioned previously, it's a little bit complex because it's based on family size. So it's not just an easy number. Um, and that's for new projects only. And then in downtown, uh, we're looking at for those additional four years to actually have them be ownership only, so that would be condos. And that would be affordable to those making one hundred to one hundred and twenty percent area median income. And we wanted to make sure that rehabilitation projects were eligible here in case there was any opportunity to utilize some of the great um older buildings that we have downtown. Just a reminder that the reason that one hundred to one hundred and twenty percent qualifies here is that we live in what's called a high-cost area, which will surprise no one, as designated in state law. And so you know, we really would be contributing to the affordability of the housing stock, even by requiring an affordability level of one hundred to one hundred and twenty percent. So um, I'll touch later on the basis for all of these numbers, but they are um in support of the adopted policies that we have for these two areas of our city. So on the next slide, you can see just a couple of those details um that we've discussed previously. We we do have a pretty small minimum number of units in case, because we do have some small parcels downtown, we wanted to make sure that any, you know, small projects were eligible. We do require that projects be completed within a, you know, relatively short window, so we don't want um, you know, it dragging out. Uh, importantly, we we don't want it to be layered with other financial incentives. Um, you know, and that's just trying to make sure that folks aren't double-dipping. And then structured parking is a requirement here. So let's go to the next slide to talk a little bit about that. Um, structured parking simply means that the parking is what you see on the right, a sort of tucked under the building. It could be underground. It could be underneath, um, you know, on the first floor underneath residential, but it's really what we call urban-style uh podium construction. And so that means that we're utilizing concrete. Rather than, if you look on the left, that's a surface parking lot like you see in a lot of places, and not that there's anything wrong with them, but they're not an efficient use of land. So given that these are these both midway and downtown. So given that these are these, both midway and downtown are these high, um, you know, we have high growth areas that we're really trying to maximize density. We're trying to attract as much growth as we can. It's really important to us that the land is utilized well. So, um, I do want to touch on a few more things about this just because I know we received some public comments related to it. So our parking requirements have not changed as part of this ordinance. So we already had on the books reduced parking requirements for these areas as compared to the rest of the city. And additionally, we have a flexibility in our parking, particularly with regards to if there's a parking feasibility study that's done. You know, we can reduce the amount of parking. So nothing about the amounts of parking here have been, um, changed at all as part of this proposal. What the only requirement that's part of this proposal is that any parking that is built is structured parking. And that, again, that, that's pretty important to us, so we're, we're feeling pretty confident on that. Um, and we're, we're right in line with a lot of other cities in terms of our parking requirements. I think that a lot of cities probably went through those amendments around similar times as TOD started becoming, you know, a more household term and, um, plans around light rail became more concrete. I, I suspect, I wasn't here at the time, but I suspect that a lot of cities were, you know, kind of, um, playing with different ideas that, that amounted to largely the same thing. So I feel pretty, I took a look at our parking requirements today just to make sure that I felt, you know, that we didn't miss something there and I, I feel good about them. So, um, let's go to the next slide and just talk a little more broadly beyond parking, just why this idea of urban development? You know, what, what is it about urban development that's important? And really this is, um, you know, just about the benefits of having people in your community. So, you know, even now with COVID and the economy having taken some impact, people are still moving here. We still have a lot of good jobs here and we have had quite a bit of time, um, where someone say we have underproduced housing units. So there was a new report that came out at the state level regarding underproduction of housing. Now, you know, I think, um, we have been on target in terms of our growth targets through PSRC, but the entire region really has had a out and shortage for quite a while. And so, um, people need housing and we want people in our communities specifically to be able to support a lot of the amenities and services that people love. Uh, we really need a density of people. So add to that the fact that, um, you know, we, for every person that comes, we need to serve them, right? With all of the urban services that people rely on, um, sewer and water and all that good stuff. So the urban fabric, that's what we would call sort of the, the, um, the pattern on the land. That's much easier to serve when it's, um, sort of this, the dense blocks that we see around transit, um, that have historically happened in our downtown and that we've planned to happen and are being implemented with Sound Transit's project over in midway. So again, this is really, this is all about those visions for these areas that we are envisioning them as urban areas. So that's why we have this focus on an urban style development. Let's go to the next slide. Um, so just to, to kind of go even a bit higher level than that, really when we're looking at this program overall, you know, I, I was asked, um, at the committee meeting to do a little bit of a pro con. And I was thinking, forgive me, but I, it's a little bit like, um, if you ever wondered like what you would be like if your parents were different. It's like, it's a little bit hard to say what exactly would happen if we don't adopt this versus if we do. Because they, it's just, nothing is certain in this life. But if we do adopt the program, I would feel pretty confident saying that, you know, it, it certainly helps us prioritize where growth happens. You know, we can't say that growth will or will not happen in a certain area of the city, um, outside of some really specific regulations, like for instance, urban separators, right? But, um, but we can incentivize and say, you know, this is where we've planned for growth, this is where we really want to see growth. We can actually incentivize and help make that happen. It also brings long-term benefits, um, sort of at the expense of the short term. So the idea is if we forego some of those short-term benefits, we are likely to see better long-term benefits. That's more discretionary income, more folks coming here, that's that higher density. Um, and then, and then of course, as I mentioned, that tax revenue coming online in eight or twelve years. It also helps us shape our transit-oriented urban areas. Um, like I mentioned about structured parking, you know, that kind of style aspect. And, um, you know, ensuring that projects that utilize, uh, this program are meeting all of, all of the requirements that we've put in here. Um, and, and as I've mentioned previously, this sort of idea of the adopted goals, um, that, you know, we have for these areas. So without the program, I just don't think that the development would likely meet those goals. Maybe, you know, one, but not all three or, or something like that. But it's, it's really unlikely we would get the same number of units, really unlikely we'd get the same quality. It's really unlikely we would get the urban style and in general development, you know, may just take a lot longer if it happens at all. So it's really, we'd be sacrificing that long-term for the short-term idea of not wanting to give something away, which we don't even have to give away frankly. So that's how I would sort of summarize the, the pros and cons, although I know that, you know, it's not the most crystal clear picture and that's just the nature of the beast, so we can certainly talk more about that if folks have questions. Let's go ahead to the next slide. Um, this is something I think most of council has seen before. You may have seen a very colorful version of this, those colors were throughout the years. I've, um, changed the colors on it, the black and white represents twenty eighteen data. Um, and I usually put a lot of caveats on this graph. I will tell you, I've seen some preliminary data from our South King Housing Group that absolutely supports this narrative. So in the future, I will be able to show you graphs with a lot fewer caveat. But until then, I will just go ahead and say that, which is that this included a number of sort of generalizations and assumptions to try to tell more of a narrative story about our housing stock as compared to being an exact data exercise. And the reason for that is that a lot of these categories don't line up exactly. But what this does attempt to show is the number of households making different levels of income, um, across the city. So on the left side, you see the number of households, this is the dark black bar, making, uh, very low income. And on the right side, you see the number of households that's making much higher income. And arrows that point to the top of the bars show you the trend of the last five years. So you can see that we have fewer folks making very low income and that is likely due to, uh, folks moving usually farther south. Um, and we have many more folks making higher income, that's a very steep increase compared to anything else on the graph. And then behind those black bars are the, what, what I would call the housing stock that's affordable to that income level. So that's saying, if you make this amount of money, how many units of both rental and ownership? Rental is the, the top lighter color and ownership is the, um, the darker gray. How many of those are at the thirty percent of your income, um, as a monthly cost kind of level? So long explanation, what I'm trying to show here is simply that, uh, we have an overabundance of housing supply in those middle levels, those, um, twenty-five to a hundred thousand, um, uh, dollars per year income levels. We have really quite a few, especially right in the middle there. And for the left and right side, for the very edges, we have much, much less housing stock available. And that means that folks are either doubling up or they're down renting. Either way, uh, we have a lot of pressure on our existing housing stock, um, to meet the needs of a more diverse community than is represented there. So this is the reason, uh, to, to bring it back to what we're doing here. This is the reason that we think it's important to have a market rate option to try to get at that right side of the graph. And then also to have the thirty percent affordability to get at that left side of the graph. So let's go to the next slide, because I think it just shows the difference between midway and downtown. And this was entirely based on our Midway Sub area plan, which is completed in two thousand and eleven. I think most of the work was probably two thousand and nine. Um, and our downtown city area action plan, which was updated in two thousand and fifteen, it's been on the books for much longer than that. Um, I really went through in detail, uh, these plans and the background just to make sure that I was really grounded in what our adopted documents and what the outreach showed during those, um, those projects. So in midway, that's where we really saw the desire for mixed income. We know that there are folks living out there now who have a pretty affordable situation. We don't want them to be priced out and that's why, again, we have that affordability requirement. In downtown, there was much more emphasis on market rate. We really want to support our retail, um, environment in downtown with more discretionary income. And specifically, uh, there was a real interest in encouraging ownership. So, but all of this is why those details at the beginning, um, were set the way they were. This is why we have the affordability levels at what they are, this is why we required the, um, ownership for the downtown, uh, twelve year as well. So I, you know, as someone who, um, is in charge of sort of writing the plans, I have very few tools to effectuate the outcomes of the plans. And, um, I think Kim, and there's just one more slide, I believe. It's really, uh, it's really, um, crucial to utilize the tools that we do have. And so, you know, this is one that is well-established, it's on the books, it's become standard. Every other city has it and the fact that we don't have it could amount to what, you know, would seem to be a very large fee essentially. Um, you know, I believe that, uh, council has bought into the idea of this urban style residential development in our high, um, high-growth TOD areas. And so I would just really ask you to consider, um, putting in place this, this critical tool that actually can help make that happen. So I think with that, I, um, all finished and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Haley. Council, do you have questions for Haley? Uh, Councilmember Fincher.
Can't hear a question.
I'm waiting just to see if she, um.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I was still muting, muted. So for the downtown RTA, that one, well, for both of them, actually, the downtown RTA and the Midway RTA. Last time I brought up that I'd like to see, uh, that I would like to see the RTAs downtown and hill be both mixed use at the eight percent level. They have, uh, allowances at the twelve percent, at the twelve-year level, but not at the eight-year level. And some of the talking about homeownership, and I'm thinking specifically of the downtown RTA. Number of families who, uh, in, uh, lower in that middle section of the graph homeowners, so they may not want to stay renters and having a mixed income unit where somewhere between five and ten percent for affordable, I'm not talking about the low income because they do have to be able to afford to buy, would not only help that family the homeownership and moving them, allowing them to then move up into the discretionary realm. But it would also help the community by adding that extra power. So, uh, having that, why would, so I know that you checked with the other cities around. And does Renton actually have this or do they have a moratorium?
Um, my understanding is that Renton does have eight and twelve here. And the twelve year, um, has a level of affordability that's, uh, twenty percent have to be affordable to sixty AMI or less. And, um, for rentals and then for ownership, twenty percent has to be available to eighty AMI or less. And, um, just, you know, because I did see this preliminary data recently, Renton really does have a pretty different housing stock than us. They do have a lot more in that upper level. So, um, I think that, that program probably makes sense, not that they're asking me. Um, but, um, you know, to answer your other, your other point there, um, Councilmember Fincher, I guess I would just say that, um, really any of these numbers can be tweaked in any direction. So we could, um, you know, we could change any of these numbers. I based them on, you know, sort of my read of our adopted policy, uh, but they are not, you know, it, there's there's not something saying that we can't change them. I just, um, you know, I didn't hear widespread support for changing them in that particular way. And so I didn't prepare that ordinance, but it is absolutely up to the council this evening exactly what levels of affordability you would like at what numbers of years.
Okay, thank you, because I would still like to see something at the eight-year target also to help. It helps not only, uh, but it helps lift the community by helping lift those families, taking them out of the rental market to the community ownership.
Madam Chair.
Um, I, so I've got a, a long list, Councilmember Thomas. Did you have, um, something in reference to Councilmember Fincher's question?
Kind of, I just wanted to let Haley know that I like what she's got.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, so Haley, thank you for this presentation and, uh, just a couple of comments, um, from when you presented this before. Uh, I just want to again express I really appreciate the, the ownership opportunity. Um, I think that's something that's fairly unique. Um, I've not heard that necessarily being in some of the other programs, uh, at other cities. So I think that's, um, but we know that that, uh, encouraging homeownership in that downtown core is really critical. So I appreciate that we've, we've built ownership into the program. Um, I also think that, you know, you've, it's been wise, the way you've structured it to address both that, both those bookends that we know we need. We need the, uh, below thirty percent AMI, which I can tell you from every conversation on the Affordable Housing Committee, that is the hardest segment to incentivize and build for. So the fact that we are targeting that segment, because in your chart, you showed how much we need that segment. Um, and then on the other end, you know, we are unique in the fact that we do need that, um, higher-end, um, development as well. So I think, you know, in, in all you've put together, a program that's really addressed the needs of the development community, specific to Kent and specific to our needs. So again, I just wanted to thank you for the work you put into this and I, I like what I see.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you Haley for the presentation. I appreciate all the, the work you do. Um, my only, I, I would have to say that I agree with Councilmember Fincher. Um, like you said it yourself, that we have people moving out of Kent, moving down south because of the affordability. So basically what it sounds like is we, I, I agree with the thirty percent for, um, twelve years, but I like to see it for eight years too, because we do need to keep in mind, we shouldn't be planning for people to keep moving south, we need to be planning for them to, you know, stay in Kent. We want to keep them in Kent because most likely they don't want to move either. And so I would like to see something for eight years as well, because we, we, yes, we're targeting for higher-end income. But especially during, right now, COVID nineteen, I don't know how, you know, are, everything's going to be different. Uh, people are going to be struggling and, you know, I don't know how the developers are even going to be, uh, how it's going to be, of course, there's a, there's a, uh, low supply, so, but I, it depends on, you know, circumstances, everything's changed right now, but I would still like to see us focus on, you know, eight-year plan as well to have a percentage for less than thirty percent AMI. Because we're trying to keep in mind that, um, you know, it's trying to show to our community that we care for all of our residents the same, not just, you know, we are trying to make sure that we are keeping them in mind when we, uh, bring developers in our community. So at least that's my, that's my feedback, so thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, thank you, Member Councilmember Core. Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Haley, again, great presentation. Um, you brought forward a couple of slides that you showed to us during our retreat. Um, and I think that does paint the exact picture of what we're trying to build in this area. Um, also, um, echoing some of Councilmember Larmour's, uh, remarks, I think that we do have a market here that we need to reach out to. Um, your weighing the benefit slide was really great. It did paint that picture that I think, um, we were trying to get some questions answered. You talk about urban development, amenities and services, and we are looking to build this area into, um, this great vision for, um, you know, young people, people who are looking, um, you know, for transit, for, um, places to be able to, um, eat and to shop in an area. And we're trying to create that for them and I think this does exactly that. When we had this conversation before, and I know Councilmember Fincher and Councilmember Core both brought up that comment about the eight-year, um, a majority of the council members were willing to move this forward as is. And again, tonight, from what it sounds like, I support it that way and I'm guessing the majority of my council members do as well.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Uh, Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, once again, Kaylee, kudos, uh, uh, good job. Uh, yeah, just picking back on what, uh, Council President Troutner said, yeah, we did talk about this year, we talked about this year, even, uh, at a workshop that we had, uh, uh, earlier on this year. So a little surprised we still continue to talk about this year. Really, it, it, what is the need in this community, right? And, uh, you look at this chart here, it pretty much tells us what we need in this community. So, you know, I, I think, you know, um, we need to balance this out. Um, we have a lot of high-tech company here moving in Kent. We want the people to be able to find their place to stay in Kent, live in Kent and shop in Kent. So I, uh, I mean, at this time where we at right now, I So I, uh, I mean, at this time where we at right now, I, I just think, you know, as, as Council President said, we kind of talked about it here and this, this is something that I strongly support. I mean, it's, this is what we need to move this city forward at this time. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Voice. Uh, any council members that have not commented?
Yes.
Yet, that would like to, uh, weigh in?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to respond to, uh, uh, Councilmember Core's, uh, concern about everybody moving south. And I can't argue about that, but can you remember that a lot of people are moving south from Seattle to Kent? You know, not everybody just leaving Kent and going south. There's, there's a migration from Seattle area as well. So I don't know if that helps or not.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Um, Councilmember Fincher, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I did. Thank you. You know, that, to that point about moving, moving from Seattle to Kent, people moving from Kent, uh, further south, look at what's happened and look at who's moving. A lot of times those are people in the lower incomes and people who are, they may not be making the seventy-five to ninety-nine thousand, the hundred thousand. One thing I would question those amounts for the household income as compared to the housing, uh, because I think for some people, those that are skewed, that they are paying more than what it's showing here. I, I would think for some of the people in rentals at least. But I look at Seattle and I look at how Seattle, ten years ago, and I look at how Seattle is now. They're losing a lot of the diversity in Seattle because the people are moving, the people who had their kids in schools that they wanted to go to, people that had businesses that they wanted to keep, people that had ties to that community and have been forced, moved because they were priced out of that community. So we should not be, I do not believe that we should be forcing people out. Cause that took a long, a, a long range plan. And so I think we have to be sure to look ahead. People were saying, so what is the outcome of this going to be later on? We're talking about a small number of housing, of housing at that lower income level at the eight percent. Five percent of the unit is not that much. So looking at five to ten percent, I don't think it's a huge ask. And, uh, I think that would be good for the community. Thank you.
Okay, um, so just a reminder to council that there will be an opportunity for debate on this, um, after we close the public hearing. So are there any more questions for Haley? All right, um, seeing none. At this point, um, in the public hearing, I would like to invite the public to provide testimony, written statements or other evidence. Kim, is there anyone on the line, um, on the phone line that would like to speak?
Mayor, I don't see anybody on our meeting list that is not identified, um, or identified as a public speaker.
Okay, thank you, um, for that. We did receive written, uh, written statements. We've got four of them that, um, I will go ahead and paraphrase what they said and then we'll ask for a motion to admit them into the record. Uh, the first, the first email that we received is from Christina Dugoni. Um, in her email, she states that she feels the MFT will help to dramatically increase incentives to develop in this area. That's an area that's been historically challenged, um, in terms of new development. She supports the MFT, but, um, does indicate that she would like to see the removal of the structured parking condition, um, in that area. The next, um, item that will be admitted into the public record, and I do want to, um, let the, the public know that council does have copies of all of these. Um, so they have had the opportunity to read them fully. And I'm just, um, summarizing for, um, for the meeting this evening. The, the next email is from, uh, Ivana Halverson from Barghousen Engineering. And, um, this email says, we do support the Midway Residential Targeted Area as a residential, um, targeted area per ordinance forty-three sixty. And, um, they are in disagreement with the parking segment regarding, um, structured parking. It would like to see it as an option rather than a requirement. The next email is from Eli Hannahcheck from CBRE. Um, says regarding the city's intent to redesignate, to designate residential targeted areas for multifamily tax exemption. We've seen tremendous support from local developers interested in Kent, in the Kent submarket. Um, would like to see this, um, with the exemption of the structured parking. And the final email is from John Hembleman, CH. Um, Karen Cross and Hembleman Attorneys at Law, saying, um, that he is writing to urge adoption with a modification. And again, um, the comment is around the requirement for structured parking, um, saying that it's inconsistent with TOD and it would, um, take away some of that incentive. So with that, um, if we could have a motion to submit the written comments into the record.
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so we've got, um, six yays, one no for the admission of those comments into the public record. Motion passes. Um, moving on at this point in time, um, I would like, um, to request a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The public hearing is now closed. Um, now is the time in, in this process for council discussion and debate. Council members, do you have any additional discussion or debate?
If I may, question?
Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Haley, the structured parking, that does not mean using like a carport design. You actually have to have a structure, like the concrete ones you displayed?
Yes, that's correct.
So the carport is out?
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, and this will be my last comment. People come to Kent, at least for me, one of the things I love about Kent is the diversity. Progress, I'm all behind it. Gentrification, I'm not. So I think we have to be looking at what we are going to be doing towards city.
Okay, thank you. Um, any additional discussion or debate? All right, seeing none. Councilmember Voice, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for this number four-three-zero. Designating downtown Kent and Midway as a target residential area for purpose of add, for learning, property tax exemption pursuant to RCW eighty-four dash fourteen.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Voice.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would definitely be supporting this motion here. And I think what people need to understand, Kent is one of the most diverse cities in the country, right? And I, I don't see in that changing based on what we are doing here today. I think it's really based on what is the need, what are we trying to do at this time to try to continue to grow the city, bring a higher income to people who actually work in the city and live in the city. We are not Seattle, we never going to be Seattle. And I think we will always be diverse, uh, one top diverse city in the country. I don't see this as a gentrification, what happened to, uh, Seattle many, many years ago. We're not Seattle, we can't and always will be Kent. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Core.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to say I cannot support this as is because, um, Councilmember Voice said, we're not Seattle. But when we are not focusing on lower income, we're not focusing on, we're not saying for eight year plan that we're not doing less than thirty percent AMI. We're only focusing on higher income. We're telling people who are in that income bracket that, you know, you're not our priority. We're focusing on people who work in Kent and live in Kent. Individuals earning less than thirty percent AMI also work in Kent and live in Kent. And they also have dreams of owning. And we are not supporting them by making, uh, a change here. So I cannot support this. So thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Larmour.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I think my concern, having been, you know, plugged in with the Affordable Housing Committee is, you know, that thirty percent AMI, that is such a difficult, difficult segment to, to, to get builders to build, honestly. And I just feel like, you know, if we, I don't think this is the program to make that happen. You know, that, that type of incent, incentive thing, it really needs to come from the state and from federal programs. Um, this program, I think, would, you know, I, my fear is that we would be actually disincentivizing development, which leads to that, then we're, you know, we have fewer units. And so then you end up with just less stock and higher housing prices and less, less overall units. Um, I think we would actually be hurting ourselves if we try to tie at the city level an incentive program to that thirty percent. That, that, you know, those programs need to come from a different jurisdiction, a different type of, different type of programming, I think, is what's, you know, what I'm hearing is really going to be the only key to getting that segment built. And I just don't want to end up hurting ourselves and hurting our overall number of stock units, which we know is important to keep all prices affordable. Um, so I just worry about the, the long-term economic impacts if we don't, um, if we try to be too restrictive at the eight percent level. We could end up with empty lots like we have today that aren't being developed at all. And so, you know, nobody wants.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Um, Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as I mentioned before, I'm supportive of this, the way that it is. Um, Councilmember Larmour said it, that lower level stock, um, is really difficult to fill. But when you look at the graph that Haley has, you can see in that middle income level, we have, uh, a good enough stock in there that we need to start looking ahead to those people that are looking for something a little bit more. And again, that gives us the ability to make that area something that we really want to, um, have develop. And we've been talking about this for some time. Um, you know, and it does come with change. And it comes with some things that people might not see as being, um, you know, the right thing to do at this, this time. But looking down the road, I think this is really going to make that area, um, exactly what we envision. It will provide that urban development, it will provide amenities with food and shopping, and it will have transportation that will get people to where they need to go. And, um, again, I support this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Voice, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I mean, I think, you know, when we make these type decisions, you know, it's, it's all about the data, okay? I mean, if you look at the data that's staring us in the eyes, I don't understand, why would you go against what the data is telling us, right? So look at this chart and it pretty much tells us what direction we need to go. And I, once again, Councilmember Larmour well says, she sits on the committee. I mean, she got a good sense on, on how this whole operate. Let the data drive us on where we need to go. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Fincher, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, I do. So as I mentioned, the household income compared to the housing units by monthly cost, I'm looking at the one in the middle, for instance, fifty thousand to seventy-four, nine-nine-nine, saying that a lot of those folks are paying one thousand to fourteen ninety-nine a month. I know a lot of people just around here on the hill who are not making that much and are paying more than that in rent. And that's for one bedroom, you know, more or less the family. So that's why I mentioned earlier that I think some of these numbers may be ask you. Maybe it does pan out that way overall. But I know a lot of families who are not making that much money and are being, they are house poor sometimes.
Madam Mayor, can we do a roll call, please?
Um, yes, so I've got a motion and a second. Um, I'm not seeing any additional discussion. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, no, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kim, would you call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Voice.
Yay.
Councilmember Fincher.
Aye.
Councilmember Core.
No.
Councilmember Larmour.
Yay.
Councilmember Michelle.
Yay.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Council President Troutner.
Yay.
So I have the vote of five yay and two no.
Okay, thank you, Kim. Um, so it looks like motion passes five to two. Thank you, council, for that very robust discussion on a, um, extremely important issue. Okay, we are going to move on. Um, as I said earlier, we, uh, are accepting public comments to the council, uh, during the coronavirus emergency via email at citycouncil@kentwa.gov or you may call in, uh, two-five-three-eight-five-six-fifty-seven-hundred. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Council President Troutner, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve consent calendar items A through E.
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. The consent calendar has been adopted. Uh, we have no other business or biz tonight. We also do not have an executive session. So with that, we've come to the end of our agenda. Um, want to remind all of our residents to please stay safe and stay healthy. Um, you can follow us on our social media channels for updates as well as our website. Um, and also encourage people, um, during this time to check out the state's website, coronavirus.wa.gov for information on the phased reopening, um, here in King County and the state of Washington. With that, we are adjourned.